All right. Good evening, all members of the council are present. So we'll call the the May twentieth meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority to Order. The council is not did not meet in closed session. We're meeting tonight pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which we are meeting via teleconference to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. We're meeting in this format with members of the public being asked to watch the meeting in live stream through our website or on Wave Cable Channel twenty and to submit a public comment and testimony in writing by six P M. on the date of the meeting to the city clerk. We will all 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 public comment that has been received by the city clerk will be noted during the meeting and all of it has been sent sent in its entirety to each member of the city council. In addition, the full text of all public comments are available on the city's website right along with the agendas and the meeting videos as well. So they're fully accessible to the public at any length. So with that, we're going to proceed to item one A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda. Madam clerk, as I understand, we have no we've received no comments on item one A.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then item one B is council communications. Are there reports from our assigned liaison? Our liaison assignments this evening, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Regional Water Resource Agency met on May fourteenth and we took action to increase dues by five percent this year and potential seven percent next year. Initially, it was an eighteen percent increase. However, there was some cost savings and for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget expenditures. In addition, the RWA established a federal affairs ad hoc committee given the increase in activity related to at the federal level. The Yola Habitat Conservancy met on May eighteenth and we received a couple of good announcements. The conservancy plan and a conservancy conservation plan was awarded an American Planting Association Sacramento Valley Section Award of Excellence. So I'm really grateful for the work that Heidi Tushin, who nominated the plan and was the driving force behind the application. In addition, the conservancy was awarded a five million dollar grant by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for acquisition of habitat conservation easements on working agricultural land as well as easements on publicly owned lands. The federal grant will serve as a match to state wildlife conservation board grants, potentially doubling or tripling the total funds available. In addition, we we approved the updated budget, which even though we received the five million dollar grant, it's a welcome addition. However, how it is expended is is limited. The budget reflects a need to for administrative changes. As a result, we approved the transition of administrative services, including the executive director under the joint powers agreement to the county, and it will require the county's approval as well. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. This is a reminder, Mr. Managers, to just to note, I know several of the districts and JPAs and other things that we are members of are this is the time of the year that they're considering their dues modifications. And obviously, I know I know in the boards that I've been, I know my colleagues are doing the same thing that, you know, given the context of the fiscal situation that we are facing now and certainly than many other cities are facing even more severely in the region that I think it will be important when we take up our fiscal, our budget again to 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 highlight the those changes so they don't simply end up as sort of below the line automatic changes, but that we're really, really able to consider the the dues to all the various organizations that we're paying that we pay into. And sometimes they don't see the same fiscal issues that the cities and counties that are their members do. And I don't I'm not speaking to this situation in particular, but I know we're all we're all grappling with this in budgets and board meetings throughout the region as well. Other other reports, Mayor Proton Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Valley Clean Energy met on May fourteenth. Power purchase agreements were approved. Hydro power greenhouse gas free attribute allocations were supported and fiscal year twenty twenty-one was discussed, including fiscal impacts related to COVID nineteen and also state regulatory actions. And then earlier today, as my colleagues know, Reclamation District nine hundred met and we discussed the twenty 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 twenty-one budget and accounting procedures, and we heard a number of project updates.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Proton Sandin. Other liaison reports? All right, seeing none, then we have no appointments to consider tonight. So we're going to proceed to the consent agenda, which is items two through ten. Are there items I can consent for separate question or comments? Captain Orozco?
Yes, item number seven, please.
All right, item seven, any others? All right, so item number seven is consideration of the twenty twenty first quarter report on twenty-first century policing. We've also received a public comment on this item as well. So Madam clerk, are you would you please display the name of the commenter on this item?
Yes, one moment.
All right. So for for anyone who's this is their first virtual meeting of the council, we display the media, the the name of the commenter, both so that the commenter is fully aware that the council has received the the complete text of the comments and has them in front of them right now, but also for other members of the public who may be interested to know that in this case, Ms. Bazan has submitted a comment and can see the full text of that comment at the city's website as well. All right. So with that, then we'll proceed to the to the question and comments. Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you. And I I by directing my questions to our acting chief Strange?
I am here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I I always look forward to receiving these reports and seeing where we are. And I I was really interested in finding out how recent events impacted some of the trends in our crime as the reports, I should say. But I wanted to ask a few questions because I did notice there were a couple of that drew my attention. On page four of the report, there is a breakout and it talks about quarterly violent crime beat compare. And I noticed there was a breakout and it did reference rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults. And we had a breakout for robberies and aggravated assaults. We did not have a breakout for rape. And I did notice that it it happened to be a tremendous because it was, you know, there there are very few incidents reported previously, but now we have report that have, you know, increased that. And you might not have the answer today, and that's fine. I just I I drew my attention because I'm thinking if we see that there have been six rape reports, would the percentage so tremendously? Is there a way we could either break to see what those reports were about? Were six reports with, you know, four of them are the same person reporting? Or is a stranger is someone who's familiar? Does those take, you know, obviously different? And so in seeing that, I guess I just needed more information. And again, you don't have to answer that today, but in the future, when we're doing this, maybe we need to break it out more. The other thing is that I saw in in aggravated assaults that forty-seven percent were domestic violence related. And I I like knowing that because, I mean, obviously, that affects how I'm looking at the nineteen aggravated assault reports already. However, I mean, how do we report incidences such as child abuse, if any, if there were any reports? Where would those fall?
Yeah, so I think I caught most of it. I might either my signal or yours was breaking up a little bit. But go into the data in general. It is fairly macro level data, and and I think I hear you on the discussion on the reporting of rape as such a general description and may really cause people to be alarmed when we know, though I don't have your exact breakdown for tonight's meeting, we do know that that a large number in more consistent in West Sacramento of the rape reports are non stranger. They're they're not stranger rapes. They're not somebody hiding in the bushes waiting to jump out. So just to going forward to dig into that number a little bit more, I think we will do that when we see any kind of significant discrepancies pop up. Six hundred percent sounds like a lot, but when you know it's six incidents, it's a little bit different. And then likewise, with the breakdowns with child abuse reporting, mostly that is done on a specific forum. And of course, we get those reports from multiple mandated reporting sources and and intake those. And so it is possible that a child abuse report could hypothetically be part of an aggravated assault case. So I don't know that it will ever be a perfect breakdown. But but if if you or the rest of council wants to see a deeper dive into crime, that's something we can probably get into. And so I'm definitely open to doing that. We have a very talented analyst that can that is frequently helping me deep dive into this. And so any requests along those lines, we're happy to help going forward.
Okay, thank you. I I did, you know, I brought this up before. And I had a discussion with our manager about it's always a robberies line. And we you've heard me talk about this before, but you know, I I see here, I'm like, okay, eighteen robberies, and I'm going through the breakdown. And then, you know, of course, the breakout on the bottom thankfully says five of the robberies, which is percent of that number, were related to shoplifting incidences, which loss prevention officer was assaulted by the suspect. And, you know, it it appears that those were, I imagine, in Walmart. Take and I thought I read that somewhere. But in any case, you know, I as a D A, these are robberies. The rest is robberies, not, you know, and that's under the law, what they're however, if in fact that is happening in Walmart and in is Walmart is in beat one. Is that correct?
Yeah, Walmart's in beat one, Home Depot, a lot of big retailers are in beat one. And then, of course, we have Target down in beat three. So both of those retail centers could be drivers of Estes robberies that you described.
I just what I'd hate to see is the skewing of the because when people look at the word robbery, they're thinking, you know, stick them up. You know, you're in the dead of night and someone pulls you, you know, to the side and says, give me your wallet. Oftentimes, it just has a different ring to it than the traditional shoplifting that goes worse than, you know, than just shoplifting. And so at some point, and it doesn't have to, I think we should have a further discussion as to whether or not we want to include those Estes robberies in with the regular violent crime robberies similar to those. I just would hate to have the crime statistics, the reporting, you know, be skewed by those incidences and then have people have, you know, the wrong idea of really and beat one, for example, just because of incidences that might be happening at Walmart. So I mean, just just something to think about that we don't we don't have to acknowledge tonight or we don't have to deal with tonight. But at some point, I'd like to to consider maybe a change in the report to to reflect that.
Yeah, and we can do that at some degree. I think we are challenged by the fact that right now, in the U C R, the Uniform Crime Reporting Guidance, it defines even an Estes type of robbery as as a count against the robbery category by definition. So so it may just take us, again, being a little bit more detailed and breaking that out and making sure that people understand the differences between the types of robberies that do exist.
Oh, I thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. And like on many of these other topics, it's really, we're very fortunate in our city to have a diverse in many ways, but definitely diverse in expertise and professional background representation on this council. Instead of have a member of the public safety community on the council as a deputy district attorney and and other relationships to law enforcement as well, it just makes a big difference in terms of our ability to 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 see past the the obvious and to to understand some of the underlying issues. And so really appreciate those comments and just underscore them because we, I mean, we can, to the extent, I mean, we're the ones collecting the data. So, you know, we can, we can, with that, it's I don't, the suggestion here isn't that we recategorize the crimes. It's just that we have a two subcategories under the U C R category that we're reporting so that so that the public and we can see. And I think that's a that's a it's a excellent suggestion so that so that both of them, again, we can understand what, you know, what are the resources that are needed? What are we doing well? What are we not doing well? So that's I think that's really important. You know, I also, I mean, just this report, I I think I said this before, and I just want to emphasize, I I and I'm glad we started. I'm very glad that Councilmember Orozco started in this section of the report because I do think it's important that we that we really, you know, every time, every, every, every year, every quarter, that we see these reports, that we really focus very heavily on this section in terms of understanding safety in our community and trends and some of the challenges and also some of the their racial and other disparities, the neighborhood issues, to hold not the department per se, although, yes, the department, but ourselves accountable for for what's going on. And 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 so much of crime and policing involves, you know, there's so much other, you know, social determinants and other issues that are happening, and we can't solve everything and everything will not be perfectly equitable in every outcome. But but that doesn't recuse us from having to pay attention to those 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 numbers and to understand what are what are we doing? And what are we doing that's working? What are we doing that's not working? And this is our this is our time to really dive into them. And and so I, you know, I can, I I hope we'll we'll think about a way to to separate these two reports because sometimes we don't start this way. And it's hard once we're talking about, gosh, you know, coffee with a cop and the basketball was so much fun. And then then you have to switch over to, you know, well, okay, but what what about the racial disparity in arrests that we've been dealing with? And it's just a very dissonant conversation. And so I really appreciate leading off, leading off with this one. And I but I didn't want to ask that because I think, you know, the comment that we got from Ms. Bazan was, you know, she's a brand new resident. We've been grappling with these issues for a while. I think in this particular case, our focus has been, you know, for the first several years of these reports that that are still relatively recent. I think since you came on, Chief Strange, you know, in the department, you really led the efforts to to for transparency and and with a real focus on equity and and putting a mirror on ourselves. But the data was, you know, messy and inconsistent and 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 it was not the same definitions and things over time. So our ability to really, you know, really hold ourselves accountable and to think about what strategies might be effective at dealing with some of the the disparities that show in the statistics has been limited, but it's been getting better every year. And then when the Racial Identity Profiling Act passed, that created more workload on the department in terms of figuring this out and a lot of challenges. But with the hope that that would also standardize some of these measures and definitions and what have you, that we would be able to to do better. So that's that data is getting better and these reports are are getting even more and more solid. And and I think it just makes it more incumbent on us to use them and to use them in a way that says, okay, what? And 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 so whether it's tonight or in our next report, you know, really diving into, you know, maybe pick a question or two. Now, there was a period where when when we, you know, for example, focused very heavily on what's the, you know, what are what are behind some of the numbers with with Latino stops and arrests, particularly in the in beat one that was covered by the injunction, you know, a few years ago. So we were very interested in let's understand that a little bit more. And 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 we ought to, you know, perhaps pick a topic each quarter that we really dive into, make hopefully an uncomfortable one that we wouldn't otherwise see. So I I I think that this, the the I want to, you know, really thank, thank you, Chief Strange, for the work that you've been doing on this for your whole time here. But it's now at a point where where we can really, you know, make good use. And I know Councilmember Ledesma was on the subcommittee to work on this early stage, but it's it's at a point where we can can use to start to continue to tackle some of these issues in our practices and our hiring and our education and everything else in ways that will will help to close some of those gaps.
Thank you all for the comments on that. And and I'm definitely open to even getting back together again to try to refine the content to that report so it does serve greater purpose as we move forward. And again, being able to challenge some of those big, big issues, I think, is what we hope to do.
All right. Thank you. All right. So then with that, we have the consent agenda before us. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Orozco. Seeing no, Mayor Proton Sandin, did you have a question or comment? Okay, seeing no question or comment, Madam Court, would you please call the role on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor Proton Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted by unanimous vote. That brings us then to item eleven, which is consideration of a workshop on a two-year contract renewal with Nomad Transit LLC for continued operation of the West Sacramento On Demand Ride Share Program. Ms. Strand?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Let me try to get my screen shared here for you. Oh, it says host disabled screen sharing. I don't know if the city clerk can help me with that.
Try again, Sarah.
Okay. All right, I believe it is working. Thank you for your patience. It's really nice to see everyone's faces. Um, the primary purpose of my presentation this evening is to conduct a workshop to solicit your feedback on a proposed two-year renewal of the contract with Nomad Transit LLC to continue operating the West Sacramento On Demand Ride Share Program. There's three main items I'll be covering, including a performance review for the second year of the city's ride share operations, an overview of the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic on the program, and lastly, a workshop to present staff's proposed approach for a two-year contract renewal to continue operating the program through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Pending your feedback, my intention would be to return on June seventeenth to city council to request your consideration of approval of a two-year contract extension alongside a one-year budget allocation request just for the upcoming fiscal year. So first, the year in review. This slide may look familiar from last year, when the city council approved an amended and restated contract that extended the program through June thirtieth of this year. As a reminder, your approval of that contract included a significant expansion of the hours of operation, including the addition of holiday and Sunday coverage, growth in the fleet supply from seven up to eleven vehicles, and a roughly doubling in the amount of planned driver hours on the platform, which subsequently resulted in a roughly doubling in the overall program expenses relative to the pilot year. With only one year of pilot under its belt, I'll note that the estimates shown here of the planned driver hours, fare revenues, ridership, were all based on the VIA team's projections. However, these projections are subject to some variation. And as we'll discuss shortly here, we've definitely seen some deviations due to the shelter in place order. But first, I just want to focus a little bit on the outcomes that resulted from the city's investment in that expanded level of ride share service that was implemented this year and discuss how the program was faring before the pandemic hit. So as you can see on this slide, following the full rollout of the city's expanded fleet and operating hours last summer, the service saw continued growth in ridership, especially at the start of this year. In a nutshell?
Could I interrupt just for a second? I'm not sure. I'm not sure if your 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 screen share is has your notes as the primary screen and then the slide is a?
Goodness.
There we go.
Is it is it showing the correct?
Uh, now your notes are on front. There we go.
Hey, Sarah, this is Aaron. I think what you probably want to do is put it on slideshow mode as opposed to presentation mode.
Sorry, this is my first screen share presentation. Is this better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies. So we are on this slide, though. Okay. Well, as I was saying, in a nutshell, the the city's investment in a doubling of service resulted in an equivalent doubling in ridership, even with the impacts of COVID nineteen accounted for. So compared to just a total of just seventy-five thousand rides that were completed during the pilot year, over a hundred and fifty thousand rides have been completed this year to date, and that's not including May or June ridership. And while average weekday ridership across the past year grew up to four hundred and sixty-one rides a day, I wanted to note that between January and March of this year alone, we were seeing average weekday ridership beginning to surpass six hundred average weekday trips. And in the short month of February, we saw sixteen thousand rides completed with a record-breaking seven hundred and fifty-eight rides in one day. So my point of highlighting that is just to say that had the pandemic not occurred, it's likely that this growth trend would have continued into the summer months, as was the case last year, especially with the extended evening hours that were anticipated to capture more of the local recreation trips to places like River Cats Games and local bars and restaurants. In addition to seeing a return on the quantity of riders, the quality of service was also maintained with average ETAs for the year at eleven point nine minutes and a consistent four point nine out of five star ratings from users. Prior to COVID nineteen, the rates of ride sharing were also the highest they had been since launching. Seventy percent of all VIA trips were carrying two or more passengers, passengers up from around sixty time sixty percent from this time last year, and fifty-five percent of all ride requests were being matched into the same vehicle, which was up from about forty percent last year. And so with the increased ridership and rates of sharing, the city would expect to see a drop in the average cost per ride. And you can see in the year that that was the case in the spring leading up to our first expansion, as was the case this past February, despite it being fairly quickly undone by the stay-at-home order in March. But nonetheless, since launching, the cost per ride to the city had become fairly consistent between ten to eleven dollars a ride and was on a downward trend with the growing ridership. So all in all, over two hundred and twenty-five thousand rides have been completed by more than eight thousand five hundred unique account holders in using the West Sacramento On Demand platform since we launched two years ago, which is, I think, a pretty good achievement. Moving on to the actual impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Similar to public transit systems across the country, in the weeks that followed the shelter in place order, the ride share program saw roughly seventy percent drop in ridership, slightly less among the senior and disabled riders, closer to sixty percent. And this represents a drop from about four thousand rides a week down to about twelve hundred rides a week. Whereas about seven hundred unique individuals were using the service on a weekly basis before COVID, we've continued to see around two hundred and twenty-five individuals using the service through the crisis period. An analysis of origin and destination data showed that unsurprisingly, the majority of the trips that have continued during this time have been to major commercial centers with grocers and restaurants and other amenities. In response to COVID nineteen, the VIA team has been working really closely with city staff to take swift action in adapting the service to comply with all public health orders and protect riders and drivers as well as reduce the fiscal impacts to the city. As the city council will recall, one of the innovative elements of the On Demand Ride Share Program was that it created flexibility in almost all aspects of its design, allowing the program to be adaptive and agile in response to changing demand. So because of this feature, when ridership plummeted in March, we were able to almost immediately respond by reducing the number of vehicles operating on a daily basis to meet that lower demand while maintaining a high quality of service. The VIA team quickly procured a new vendor to conduct more frequent vehicle cleanings using EPA-approved products that are known to kill the virus. And they also set new parameters on the ride sharing algorithm to limit only three passengers per vehicle to ensure physical distancing. And the team was also very quick to coordinate with staff to ensure consistency in the messaging that was going out to riders regarding the requirements of face coverings. And lastly, as I think many of you are aware, I'm especially proud to share that the same week that the shelter in place was issued, we were able to very quickly coordinate to provide assistance to the Yolo County Food Bank in delivering food to very appreciative local residents once a week. So in terms of the actual fiscal impacts that we're looking at, there is a silver lining. Because we were able to scale back the fleet supply to meet that lower demand, we're currently estimating that we'll have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take, in cost. we're currently estimating that we'll have about $150,000, give or take, in cost savings at the end of this fiscal year relative to what was initially projected. However, because of the drop in ridership, this also translates to slightly lower fare revenues than projected. Assuming that we do complete about 160,000 trips by the end of June, we're projecting roughly $250,000 in fare revenues that will be available for the city to reinvest towards the next year of operation, subject to your approval. And overall, after combining those cost savings from adapting the level of service with the fare revenues, we would estimate that there will be a total of about $400,000 available to rollover should the council so choose. I'll just note, as you may, you know, not be surprised to hear, these numbers are subject to change depending on how the rest of this month and next month shake out in terms of demand. But we would have final figures included in the proposed contract extension that we would bring back in June. Which brings us to the proposed workshop on, proposed two-year renewal option. I first want to apologize, as I think I accidentally removed a reference in the agenda report to Attachment Two, which contains the draft contract extension and fee schedule in your reports. So if there's references to the fee schedule that may have caused confusion, it may be helpful to, to look at that attachment. In the table on your screen, I've included this current fiscal year's operations in the first column just for reference, and a couple of key points just overall. First, as I've mentioned, we're proposing a two-year contract extension, but we'll only be asking for a one-year budget allocation. And this is due to the uncertainties that have arisen due to the pandemic. Since we don't know how quickly or slowly ridership may return on the platform. And this is my second point, we, we would be just proposing to continue with a full year of service and ask for a full budget allocation for the year. But in all likelihood, ridership is going to return somewhat slowly, and we will likely not use as much funds as are proposed here. Lastly, the proposed contract extension would include an optional electric vehicle expansion option, which we would propose to return to discuss further as ridership returns on the platform and subject to the City Council's interest. The inclusion of the EV expansion option in the contract extension is really a function of securing those rates should ridership return and expansion be merited, as well as should the council find interest in adding EVs as part of an expansion, available funding, so on and so forth. I'm not going to go into super detail on the EV expansion option, but I welcome any questions that you might have on that. For the upcoming fiscal year, and in light of some of those uncertainties created by COVID-19, what we're recommending is a conservative approach that would just hold current service levels constant with just a few minor changes. So as you'll see, of the 11 Metris vans that are currently operating on the fleet, we are proposing to retrofit one of those into a wheelchair-accessible vehicle, so we would have a total of three waves on the platform. And the reason for this is to ensure that we're able to comply with TDA guidelines and just generally make sure if a wave has to go out for service, that we're able to ensure equivalent levels of service for wheelchair users on the platform. In, in addition, we've had fairly high level of demand for the customer support phone line in the West Sacramento area. And so on advisement from the VIA team, there's a modest increase from growing from one FTE up to 1.25 FTE of customer support to help keep the wait times lower on the, on the phone lines. But overall, the total cost that's being proposed would be just slightly higher this year at 2.032 million, and that's inclusive of city staff time. So as I previously mentioned, we do anticipate roughly $400,000 in funds will be available from the current year to rollover toward the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 operations, should the City Council choose to do so. And shown here, accounting for the fare revenues and unspent TDA from this fiscal year, the actual new TDA fund allocation that would be requested toward continued operations would be $1.632 million. Before jumping into the bigger-picture budget conversation, there was just a couple of other considerations that were included in your report that I wanted to note and, and just flag for your feedback in this conversation. First, there's the CPUC Access For All Program, which you may recall was discussed with council in December. This program requires a 10-cent fee be collected on all TNC rides in California, and it's currently proposed to be passed through the, to the city in the contract with VIA. So should the City Council desire that these fees be handled any differently, I would just request that you provide feedback on that this evening so that we can incorporate that into the contract extension we bring back. Additionally, staff would be proposing that another user survey be conducted in the coming fiscal year, just to, to continue to better understand how folks are using the platform, but also as a tool to help us explore a potential price increase in the weekly VIA pass, as we found that growth in the use of the weekly pass is undermining some of the projected fare revenues. What we would be proposing findings of that survey and make a recommendation to City Council on whether a VIA pass price increase would be merited. Bigger picture, the city continues to have broader transit expenses when looking at the rideshare program combined with ongoing Yolo Buses, fixed route, and paratransit services. Pre-COVID, our TDA apportionment findings, which are included as Attachment Three of your report, we're looking fairly optimistic at about 4.07 million for the upcoming fiscal year, and our current TDA reserve balance sits at $4.5 million. With the release of the draft YCTD budget for this year, they are projecting a 30% reduction in TDA apportionments. However, I'll note that that is just an estimate, and we won't actually know those, those final impacts until the coming weeks or months. And some transit agencies are estimating that the impacts could be even higher than that. That being said, if we were to assume a 30% reduction in our apportionment, we could be looking at a reduced $2.84 million apportionment this year. That being said, the YCTD budget does include some federal stimulus that's being applied to all of the member jurisdictions' liabilities. So our, the ask from the city this year from YCTD is reduced from what was previously around 2.1 million down to 1.54 million after a $1.4 million stimulus is applied. And for the On-Demand Rideshare Program, as I just mentioned, a new ask of 1.632 million that would, that accounts for the $400,000 of rollover would be requested. So this totals to $3.17 million of TDA that would be requested in the upcoming fiscal year. And as you can see, that could potentially result in about $330,000 or more if our apportionment ends up more than 30% reduced. So the, the key question for City Council in this regard is, would it be acceptable for us to further utilize TDA reserves in this coming fiscal year to cover the costs of both transit operations? Or should we explore alternative funding sources or potentially service cuts on one or both platforms? So with that, I'll come to our requested action, in which staff respectfully recommends that the City Council provide feedback on the operational and budget approach to support a two-year extension of the contract with Nomad Transit LLC. And I've listed out some of the key topics that I presented this evening that would be great to get your feedback on. And second, direct staff to return no later than June 17th, 2020, with a final contract extension and budget allocation request for City Council's consideration of approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Desmond, did you want to lead this off?
Sure. Excuse me. And Sarah, thanks as always for a very thorough and comprehensive look at not just VIA and the success it was having right up until COVID hit, which was really exciting and for us, but also just on the general state of kind of our transit dollars and how I'll address that. I think at the last, I think it was last week, our last council meeting, we had our YCTD meeting, and I reported out to the council at that time, having just had a workshop on the budget a week ago Monday, where some of these issues were starting to surface. And so I, so I appreciate that our city has taken this, this role, which is what we envisioned. I think three years ago, when we started this endeavor, that we start looking more as a city transit, I don't want to say provider, but certainly a transit manager overseeing a portfolio of transit services that are on here. The one element that's not on here to talk about is kind of the status of jump slash line. But all three of those modes, plus our work on the bikes and pedestrian master plan kind of gave us a full read of transit and mobility. But on this, this, you know, VIA has been a game changer for us. And I think my, my immediate feedback to this, even with the pandemic and the, through the pandemic, it's, it's, I think it's proven its value because I think part of what we were concerned about, at least I was concerned about, was that having the scalability both upward and downward, in this case, of how quickly could we adjust to increasing demands, which we did last year, right? We started making changes. And then here, it's just a worst-case scenario of complete shutdown of business and schools and, and as we go through the shelter in place, and we were able to normally adjust and refine our services. We're still providing a valued service for our citizens and our residents and neighbors to have mobility and, and, and provide it. So, you know, I'm supportive of continuing to be a relationship. I, I do want to just ask a couple of questions, though, on, so, and I would just say, because of those reasons, I'm, I'm supportive of it because I think it's still, it, it meets sort of our, at least my core goals of kind of where transit and a mobility option that we, the city provides can, can come in and, and, and scale up or down, in this case, hopefully not too much down, but scale up with us, and then, and in times of need, scale down. And, but we do, we are left with a, with a bigger budget question, which I want to address here in a second. But back on, on the kind of two-year contract, one-year allocation. So to, to, to approach that, 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 it's a hun, sorry, a million and a half, basically, right? And the allocation for, for the one-year allocation, is that, is that right?
Yeah, about 1.6 million.
Right. And, and so what I'm getting at is, is that, and, and with, with the one-year allocation, that'd give us an opportunity to, to budget for two years and then reassess in a year to see if ridership comes back. And my question is, because I also read is, these are dependent on TDA dollars, which I'm, you know, again, very, the larger picture is the availability of those dollars. So we would, would we, with the status quo of both YCTD as it's been proposed and as you're proposing here, will we be dipping into TDA reserves to get to cover the combined $3.1 million of transit services that we're getting?
Yes. So what's, what's included in the report is if we're assuming a 30% reduction in TDA, kind of building constantly with YCTD's projections, then we would be looking at a request of about $330,000 in TDA reserve funds. The current balance of the unrestricted TDA reserve is 4.5 million. So it'd dock us down to about 4.2 million left in reserves. But that's assuming that it's only a 30% hit to the apportionment.
Right. Well, and, and that's where, and I'm, I'm kind of going next because I, I just wasn't clear on sort of that increase and looking at the larger budget issue. So if, and of course, if it goes, if it, if it, the TDA dollars become more scarce, and then, of course, we're going to dip more into it, which, which at a policy level, I, I think I might go back to the mayor and ask this question. It's because, because our decision on having that unrestricted balance was a policy decision by this council, and so we would have flexibility and not, and, and I think he has a broader understanding of that holdback or that reserve that we had. So A, we have things to fund via or like it, but, but I do want to talk about for a bit the, the, the YCTD budget, because it came up last week. And part of, part of the concern there is, again, the, 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 the projection or the assumption of using 30% reduction and the 1.5 million dollar ask of the city, which is down nominally and percentage-wise there every year, is the, 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 the change about that is obviously the CARES Act funding they got, which at a policy level, YCTD is looking at trying to make that, that CARES money, A, if we get it, which, so I'm not 100% clear that we're, we would get all 11 million dollars. I think that the agency kind of looks at is maybe pegged out, and that it's a large sum of money for a small district. But if it, if it, we were to get it, I think the plan is, is try to sustain that over a three-year period. And I think the questions that were raised at, from both the winner's membership as well as mine is the unknown here is, is just, again, what's, what the TDA dollars, tax dollars coming in, and what ridership will look like. And I think that the, the, the difference here is, is the, the cost structure for YCTD is, is really the same. If we didn't have that 1.5 billion, our cost would, 1.4 million that we're anticipating coming from the CARES Act, we'd be faced through, facing a bigger ask coming from YCTD to kind of sustain current operations. So again, I'm trying to balance, sort of, the, the word that's come into mind for me is sustainability in an unknown environment. And I'm not suggesting, and everything I'm suggesting I've brought up at YCTD is that, those, and winners brought up as well because while our budget, which we talked about last week, you know, is, looks, looks, we can manage to it at this point in time, we, we also don't know. And we're also trying to make sure downstream that these kind of dollars don't get soaked up in a matter of two years because we just didn't plan well or take the opportunity to define more sustainable ways to uphold transit and, and, and those dollars. So I think in, in the, in the short story, I, I'm supportive of kind of going forward using reserves, but I think we do need to maybe tighten a little bit around what we can expect out of YCTD in the next two to three years. And, and, and kind of really keep an eye on these TD, TDA funds because, again, you know, we have to make adjustments in both services. And a year from now, ridership doesn't come back if, if, you know, and I was reading some in preparation YCTD, I was trying to get a gauge on how some of the cities in this urban areas around the world are starting to recover, what they're seeing, and they're not seeing it bounce back, that's for sure, to ridership levels. Some, I forgot what city I was looking at, reporting high increase in individual car sales, which goes opposite of the kind of work we're trying to do on climate change and managing through that. So again, there's some real, really big questions kind of staring us in the face around kind of both these budgets and both, and, and being able to manage through that and, and where ridership is. I think frankly, because VIA is able to, to manage through and be a very city-centric, intra-city service and not so much a commuter service, I think it, it, it can find new ridership in certain ways. So I think, again, I'm thinking about the word sustainability. So again, those are some just general comments, and I'll stop there because I can keep going on about this subject over and over. But again, really good job, Sarah, on kind of presenting a very honest plan and where VIA is, and certainly where we can, we can go next. The only sounding question is, is maybe you can approach the two, is, I'm sorry, is, is on the EV approach? Is what other sources of funding we might find for that to help offset that increase?
Yeah, and I Yeah. And I did include some information in the report, but proposal has in mind the SECOG Green Region Grant that we were awarded in late 2018. A small portion of what was a 2.665 million dollar grant that we got was reserved for demonstrating electric vehicles on the ride sharing fleet. And so we would propose to come back to city council with a plan that would look at, you know, how would it work logistically, operationally? We would have to install the infrastructure to support.
I was going to say.
But I still need to explore whether we could also tap those funds, not just for the vehicle acquisition, but for the operation of them on the fleet, which could help offset some of the overall cost of the program.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ludesma. I want to, while, since you raised the reserve issue, I want to, I think I'll just, I'll just hop into and I've been working on some of these issues at SECOG also. And, and just to first say, also thanks to Sarah, but also there's, there is, there are some good things, good news in, in, in in this report and, and some hopeful clues about things that we might do in the future. So I think the, you know, the, I, 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 I want to, at least on SECOG's behalf, give you a little bit more assurance, Mr. Ludesma, about that, about that CARES Act allocation of 11 million. It's a lot of money, but it's out of 111 region wide. So it is about the right proportion and transit agencies really were one of the big winners in the, in that CARES Act, certainly relative to us or to other governments. So it is the right, it feels like it's, that's, you know, you know, absent some mistake, it's kind of, it should be, that should be solid and it's, and it's great. It's really important for the district and for us. And it also delays a, a, a problem for another year. And so, but I appreciate both of you highlighting that, that that's a welcome delay. It's still a delay. So we can't, we can't, you know, act as though this coming year, YCTD budget is going to be the same on a monthly basis. This is a reserve unlike other reserves, right? The, the, we have a large TDA reserve that really was not for the purpose at all of, of preparing for fiscal downturns or recessions or revenue losses. Or, you know, we, we did this coincident with, with the decision that the council made to put all of its TD revenue, TD revenue essentially into, into mobility options over the objection of our public works director, to put all the money in there because we're building, you know, that all, most of the construction that we've been doing north of the Barge Canal has been in transit oriented developments for which we don't yet have high frequency, high quality transit. And it is, you know, as we open up a new, you know, as we open up Capital Yards at Tarbridge Gateway and Third Streets, we couldn't realign the entire bus system just to serve that one complex. But that complex is to anchor a whole new development pattern in the Washington neighborhood that will depend, that depends on high frequency transit. We said to folks moving into Capital Yards, you know, we're not, we're not going to allocate as much parking because this is a transit oriented district. And if we have a lot of parking, then residents will move in who have lots of cars and will never be able to switch them over to other, other alternatives. And so we face this timing problem, this coincidence problem between land use development and, and change of neighborhood mobility patterns and actually operating the transit. So you said, we need to be able to move as soon as people move in with real transit solutions. And when we do that, there won't, the ridership will be very low in those areas because they're, they're just developing. But we have to run the service as though the, the districts are highly populated. And so that was, that was the intent and also understanding that, you know, that our land use plans all assume a streetcar project, which we, you know, doesn't exist today. And so we, we said, we have to have TDA funds aside to be able to implement transit solutions that will meet the needs that the streetcar is designed to do in the interim period. So sort of big goals around what this TDA reserve would, would do, none of which were related to, and we have to also account for the fact that revenues may change over time. And, and all of those things are still true in terms of, of the need to be able to match some sort of mobility alternative to transit oriented developments that we are building in the Washington neighborhood, in the Bridge District, on West Capitol Avenue and elsewhere. So that fundamental need is, is still quite, quite present. And so I, for me at least, I'd like to be careful about treating the reserve as, oh, look, look at this gift that came to us from the past that we can now, you know, so we can, we can make less disciplined decisions today. We still need to, we still need to be smart about how, how we're doing that. And so I'm, you know, I'm not, definitely not objecting to, you know, the possibility that we might have to pull $200,000 out of those reserves in order to continue these, these two services. And that's certainly up for, for budget discussion. But I, but I think we, we need to be careful not to become undisciplined as a result of the existence of that reserve. And really, this is, this COVID moment is forcing us to think about some of these bigger, deeper challenges that were already there. But that are now sort of, they all have an exclamation point behind them around the trends around transit and usage and all of that and decisions that we're going to need to make. At the same time, it's also, you know, it's also, you know, how people decide to come out of this, this situation, you know, individual residents and, and employees in the city is still up for grabs. People still are deciding, yeah, car sales might be up, but they're not up that much. People are, we still have a chance to help shape the choice environment, the choice architecture under which our residents and, and visitors and employees are making those decisions. And so I think, you know, it can be tempting for us to think, you know, how do we protect the VIA service? Or how do we protect YCTD? Or how do we do? You know, how do we just hold on? But, but the, the sort of attitudes about mobility and choices about mobility are, may change in significant ways. And not all those ways, not all of the potential ways right now are great. And some of them are actually, are pretty scary from a climate, air pollution and congestion perspective. And so I, I think, you know, one of the things that we need to, one lens we have to look at these choices around is what is, what are the, what are the decisions that we're making that are going to help to minimize the, the loss of some kind of mobility alternative that's single occupancy vehicle, whether that's a bus or not. But really put it in that, in that, in that, in that framework, not how do we support transit? Whether it's VIA or YCTD, but how do we, how do we support mobility that isn't that single occupancy car? And let's, let's look for the most nimble, most, you know, most, most high productivity, the most reversible, in case we get it wrong, kinds of, kinds of choices within the portfolio that Mr. Ludesma described and beyond. And I think that's, that's really, you know, part, at least as I'm trying to approach this, is to really think about that in, in that, in that, in that, in that framework because the stakes are so high. So I appreciate the, the recommendations that are here. I'm supportive of, of them, the wave, the wheelchair vehicles and particularly if we're able to work this, you know, this potential leverage point with the CPC, TNC fee charge and all of that, if we're able to find a way to use some of that expenditure towards the wave charge or, or some offsets that, that would be, that's definitely worth pursuing. I'm, I'm very supportive of the EV piece in part because I know that the Climate Commission is going to be coming to us with their recommendations and, and this, this option was, may, may seem quite attractive in relation to other options that are going to be before us in order to get to, to the stage that we're going to need, especially, especially if driving starts to increase, you know, we're going to, we're going to be in a whole world of trouble. We're going to need every option out there. So this EV option, I really want to encourage. And if there are things that we need to do at SECOG in order to get appropriate flexibility or to compete for additional funds or whatever, I'm, I'm certainly ready to help to make that happen as, as well. I guess two other things I wanted to inquire about. So the, the UC Berkeley the Transportation Institute study, is that, did that disappear? Is it coming? When you mentioned the survey, I, I thought, well, you know, I've been waiting with bated breath for the, you know, for the deep, deeply, you know, rigorous research that had come out. Is that still on track or has something happened?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. I meant to mention that. So that has unfortunately suffered a series of delays. The UC Berkeley team, one of their primary graduate researchers departed from the research center about midway through. And so it took some time for them to bring someone else back on. And it's, we've, we've certainly been working closely with them to try to get it across the finish line. So, but it is still coming. Complete answer I can provide.
Given COVID-19, it's, it's not in the top five decision drivers right now for this, for the VIA, for the VIA contracts. So I'm just, I mostly was just curious whether or not we'd be getting that, that data because it will be, and that, that their insights, because that, that will be useful. The other thing that I wanted to suggest is we are, we've been, we're making some significant progress this week on the citing of testing, COVID-19 testing in West Sacramento. And the range of, so there's a site at the, at the local pharmacy, but more importantly, we're working, you know, our staff is working closely with the county on a county-state site in the city. And, but there won't be 10 sites within West Sacramento. And there's a, a great deal of interest and it's important also that testing is, is penetrating multiple kinds of communities and places in the city. Different geographic places, different cultural communities, different age and demographic groups. And so I want to, given the, given the space that we have in this year's contract and recognizing the carryover as possibility alternatively, whether or not we, it's possible for us to contemplate a, making a, you know, essentially when you get it, when you, when you make an appointment to get a, you have a verified appointment to get a COVID-19 test in the city, that they could issue you a code and we could, we could assure that residents of West Sacramento could, could ride for free to the test. The test is also free. But we do want to make sure that it's, 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 it's open to and accessed by, by folks of all economic backgrounds in the community. We don't want cost to be a barrier. And if we have room in the VIA contract, and obviously there are drivers as well that need, that, that need that compensation, I wonder if it's possible for us to, to move forward with, with something like that as well. So just put that on the table for colleagues to hopefully comment on or if that's fine to go forward. So next up is Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Guerrero.
So I'm really proud of VIA. I am both before the pandemic and in, especially during the pandemic and all of the wonderful things that this option represents to our community. I'm absolutely in support of the relationship. Obviously, you know, there are concerns about, you know, what demand will be as people have, you know, they tried different options at this point, you know, including more people getting out and maybe they're more comfortable riding the roads on their bikes. And that would be a great thing as well. I mean, that's not, that's not a bad alternative, clearly. I, I would really like to not see a reduction in the ridership that depends on VIA, especially those who are wave riders. That's how we put them, wave riders. That sounds like they're riding the wave in the ocean. But needless to say, it's a, there are folks that are willing to risk even the, you know, fearing they're compromising their health because they need to get from place to place and they're going to take VIA to do it. So I mean, I, I think that we've made a tremendous investment in something that is pretty groundbreaking. And I would hate to see us back away from that investment because we need to be there when people find the trust and when they get back to their regular routines and need to see VIA there to get back to, you know, get back into the swing of what their lives used to be. And so having that availability is, is very important. But I mean, again, as far as the trust, I think if I'm trying to think, you know, as a regular rider, what would be my concerns? And it'd be, well, is it safe? And so ensuring that the public is reassured that there are safety measures in play that are going to protect them. So that way, everybody feels free putting their family, yeah, feel safe putting their family on one of these vehicles. And, you know, some of those options, you know, I mean, I'd hate to be like the cop car where there's the glass between the driver and the passengers, but at the same time, given recent changes, that might be one of those things. It takes a little bit of the intimacy away, but at the same time, you know, people might feel a little bit safer. Or even, as I heard also, you know, maybe it's, you know, there are certain, just as we roll out, having to confine rides to just a certain number of passengers or, you know, where they could be spaced or just families or people that are normally in each other's space. But yeah, I mean, of course, the first knee jerk is like, well, you know, if there's not going to be the demand there and you know, or should we really be investing all of this if, you know, I'd hate to see empty Vias also, right? But at the same time, without, I just, I would really not like, I would really like to be present when people are ready for their next ride. And so I, I think I'm just echoing the sentiments of my colleagues on some of the same concerns, but I'm in full support of renewing the contract and I'm moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In thinking about where we're at and, you know, sorry, let me just go back for a second. Sarah, I just want to say one of the reasons why I love having you on the team, working for, for WesAC is because of how creative you are and what you do with what we provide as far as information. You go in and, and do a deep dive and make things look amazing. And just the work you did on the Yolo Food Bank outreach was great. That was extremely helpful for our residents. And, you know, continuing that work, I really appreciate, you know, that, that effort and the partnership you've established with Yolo Food Bank. Also want to give a shout out though to the Yolo County Transit. They've also contributed, may not have been here specifically, but in other regions in the county. And so they stepped up as well. So appreciate what they've done in that partnership. I wanted to put a couple of suggestions and some thoughts. And, you know, definitely Chris has a lot of background here on, on transportation and our work with Yolo Transit. And, and the use of the TDA funding, I appreciate, Chris, your, your feedback on that. That was along the same lines and Mr. Mayor, I think your, your thoughts along where, you know, how it could be used and the need for why the reserve is there and to, and to have it, you know, stepped up and used at a time like this. In thinking about where we're at today and what our needs are, it's, it's a little murky because what we're looking at as far as recovering the economy is unclear. And in looking at what we can do in making some modifications today, because that's, that's going to be our new normal with our social distancing. How, how is Yolo Bus going to, you know, work collaboratively within the future with, you know, our other mobile, mobility hubs, which we were establishing really productively early on. And then things had to get scaled back. And some suggestion was looking at a survey and I was thinking of maybe expanding that survey to see what it is the residents really are interested in seeing for future mobility. What helps them to feel safe? And what, what, what mobility options can we establish so that it accommodates what they are searching for? And so one of the things that people are researching today is the growth in the use of bikes. So Shanghai-based Telebike saw the number of e-bike riders tenfold after the shelter in place orders. And China's Didi's bike share increased, you know, back to 80% pre-virus while, you know, the public transportation usage lagged. So if we can find a way to unify in one app, these mobility options, that will get people to maybe use VIA along with other options like bikes and, or scooters, whatever we have moving back into the future. Just, just some ideas in looking at how we can, and I know that's something you were, you were working on in the past. But in, just seeing what we could do to expand on that moving forward again, just from those that are opening up from the shelter in place and what the trends that they're, they're experiencing. And also just to shout out to the, you know, Franklin County, Washington, established a VIA as well. So they are not charging their customers right now. They were going to delay opening, but you know, it's, it seems to be effective. Our community appreciates it. So want to continue to, to take a look at the usage of TDA funding to bridge other mobility options. And so this may cost some money. And seeing how we can reach out to do some surveys. I know, you know, whether it be, we, we're doing, and by the way, we're doing much better, better through COVID-19 in reaching out to residents and other folks in the community. So we have a, a reach. So we have a, a, a reach that I think now we didn't have before, um, and blending it with now that we are going back to work or what, what are the things you like to see as far as getting around and how, how can we accommodate what your interest in, um, you know, uh, how you feel about what's going on in the future? So those are just a few ideas. I just wanted to give back to you, Sarah, and, and continue to do the good work you're doing.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just mention really quickly in response, as part of the broader mobility action plan that is underway, albeit slightly interrupted with the shelter in place in terms of outreach, we've been trying to pivot to a digital outreach, um, approach that i- is actually crafting a survey that in, in some ways may be addressing what you're getting at in trying to better understand how people are currently, you know, have been using the transportation network and other mode options that they might have a propensity towards. Uh, so I think that you'll be happy to, to see that come out in the next month or so.
That would be great, and, and that helps in kind of rebuilding the customer's trust, um, as, as in confidence. So it's kind of like an education of how things, how we're accommodating, what their interest is, um, as far as messaging and the marketing. So whatever we hear, it helps to, you know, plug in and, and being responsive and, and explaining what tools we're using to provide that level of support to increase confidence in using our mobility.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Strand, uh, um, continuing success of VIA even, uh, during these challenging times. Continues to inspire me and for, for the, uh, mode to actually be able to step up and, and help people stay connected, even though ridership's down, if we hadn't had it, um, available. It, it's really hard to, to imagine, um, folks being able to do the things that they, you know, essential things that they need to do for at least a certain portion of our population. In regard to the contract term, I, um, I'm really curious about what you see as the biggest benefit to us to extend a term for two years and then what you think the biggest risks be of that. I was thinking a, a little bit about how uncertain the, the future really is in terms of funding for us and, and then the emergence of, of new technologies, um, or new, new modes that come from crises. So I, I don't know that I ha- I have those answers. I just like to understand more the thought about the hot, the thought behind it to your contract term versus, uh, along with a one-year budget commitment potentially. And then, um, I just don't know, we, we need to be maximizing our flexibility and, um, dealing with the, potentially dealing with that uncertainty. So I, I'd love to hear a little bit about the contract term termination. I couldn't find it in the amendment, so it looked like it was mutually agreeable. It wasn't requested rollover of a two-year extension within the original contract.
Yeah, I'd be happy to elaborate on that a little bit. The, the thought behind doing a two-year contract extension, the primary benefit is giving a little bit more, um, certainty to riders that this program is going to be sticking around a little bit longer. It's a question that has come up in surges the past two years, um, for, for the, you know, those who depend on it the most wanting to know, oh, is it going to stay around? Is it going to stay around? But also it's an admini- just administrative, you know, burden alleviation to some extent of, it's been a fairly vicious cycle of, of coming back with these contracts, and now that we've gotten it, uh, to a point where it's fairly stable, it would just give us a little bit of leeway, um, to have at least a baseline level of service in place and rates secured, um, through 2022. Um, in terms of risk, I would assess it as fairly low risk because we're still in the driver's seat of this contract. No pun intended. But there's so much scalability and flexibility within the program. The, the one-year budget ask, as I mentioned, it's, it's pretty conservative in that it assumes pretty much a full year of service, but in reality, ridership is probably going to lag in recovery and we won't be rolling out all 11 vehicles, you know, come July. In reality, there's likely to be, um, additional cost savings relative to the budget allocation that we'll request. But the intent would be to come back to council quarterly to continue to assess those changes and those risks, so that we can go in eyes wide open into that second year and continue to give the council regular opportunities to say, you know, scale back or scale up, or let's go ahead and entertain the EV expansion now. And just continue to have those, those discussions moving forward.
And thanks, thanks for, for all of, of that. On the, on the term issue, I think the, you know, and this, this, uh, Councilmember Ledesma kind of opened the door on this, this issue at the beginning in terms of the jump, um, Uber, Lime question, and there's a lot of, there's a lot about that, and we actually have, I don't think we've really briefed on that much as a council yet. But one advantage of the two-year contract is also signaling to VIA, to its, its, um, executive leadership, its shareholders, you know, that they, that there's a, there's a, a relation, a longer-term relationship here. Um, and since we're not making the, the two-year budget, just budgetary decision, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm leaning toward it for that reason. I think we, you know, we, there was a bit of hubris, um, in the region around, you know, how much, how much power we had over, over scooter operators and everything like, uh, everything else, and, and neglected to account for the, for the, just the massive amount of venture capital that was propping up all those entities, and once the market fell out, you know, we're now, a lot of communities around the country are wondering how, how they're going to get bike share or scooter share in their, in their communities. And, and so I, I, I want, I would, I, I would want VIA to have a, also a sense from us that, you know, we're in, we are in this for the long haul, and if they're trying to figure out where to focus their, their efforts and their investments, then it should be, um, here, here in West Sacramento. So it's, it's, to me, it's not the only reason, but it, it's one factor to get to the issue that I think Mayor Protem Sandin is appropriately raising about. Given all the uncertainty, why would we possibly think about going into a long, what feels like a long-term contract right now for, 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 for two years? So, and in addition to, 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 to Councilmember Ledesma, Councilmember Guerrero, both, both talk about bikes, and this issue I think is going to be a, uh, it is a key one, and I appreciate both, both of you raising that, 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 uh, you know, we are, 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 we, we were already in the vanguard of thinking about these issues as, what's our more, what's our mobility portfolio? Not, not, what's our, what's our transit thing, and then over here something else, but really what are, what, what, what are the, all the options? And how do we link them together, uh, whether it's on the same app, um, or the, or regulatory-wise or other ways that make it easy? And whether those, those mobility options are redundant to one another, so you have an option if it's raining. You can get around even on Sundays. I mean, we've been really thoughtful in this city about trying to think about, okay, how does this mobility thing really work? If you don't have a car in the city, and, and so I think we, we, we have to, we do have to keep doing that and thinking about this. Like what are the, what are the central pieces? And it's good, that may call the question for, for our partners like Yolo Bus. Like do, what, is there a role for Yolo Bus beyond inner, intercity service to Sacramento or, or to the other parts of Yolo County? And those, that's always been a hard question, and it may call the question for us on VIA. I mean, I think that we're in the right space right now, but we don't want to end up in a position where 10 years from now, we're like, well, you know, ridership's still declining, but we're going to, we're going to keep adding money to the VIA budget. I think, you know, we, we're nowhere near there yet, but we don't want to fall into the, into that either, um, uh, because we've seen what the results of that can sometimes be. Then lastly, just to reemphasize a comment that a couple of, of, of councilmembers made, which is that, we know, uh, we know that everything's going to be different from two months ago, but we really don't know what it's going to be. You know, it's, it's, I mean, even, even our, even our, our forecast from eight days ago about housing and mobility and food and, you know, everything else is, we're all, we're mostly wrong. And so, you know, a great deal of humility, uh, you know, we, we need to be aware that we've got to break out of our, 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 our notions about how things have always been or how they were for up until two months ago. But we also have to be, we also have to be deciding decisions like this in ways that are nimble and adaptable quickly because things are going to change. We do know that, but we don't really know how, and we don't know how we're going to change. And so I guess the last thing I would say is you're thinking about surveys, um, Sarah, um, to be very careful because right now people will tell you, the only thing I care about is if somebody is wiping down the VIA or whatever. And that's, you know, what, six months from now, a different whole, I mean, six weeks from, six days from now, it'll be a whole different set of issues. The, the, just the, our, our psychological attention is so focused right now in this one domain. It wouldn't be necessarily the best time to ask people about their mobility habits and preferences for the next five years. And where should we be making investments? And so it's, it's important to, to check in and do the kind of user research and surveys and that sort of thing, but also to be careful about overinterpreting, um, what we know and what, and what, and what potential riser, riders and users know now in a time like this. Councilmember Ledesma.
Yeah, uh, thank you for, that's a really good comment. I, I did want to go back to, you asked for feedback around the use of VIA, uh, and, uh, the, I, I know the work you've done this week or weekend, uh, to, uh, amplify our need for testing in West Sacramento. So thank you for that. But also I do support the, the idea, if possible, how to use VIA as a vehicle, and, and i- if it's free rides, it's somehow we can accommodate within the scope of our contractor. To get people to that, to testing, a, a testing site, uh, would be, would be great. I think one of the great things about VIA, it's done for at least me, is kind of shone a light about the, um, uh, you know, how transit, this, this mode of transit has really broken down kind of equity issues that were already in existence. And so giving people from all the city an opportunity to get to a testing site would be part of that, so I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, that's something, I, I know it's doable, but I think there's a number of details and logistics that we'll just need to look, look closer at and iron out before we can confirm.
Sure.
All right. Further discussion on this item? Uh, to- tonight is just the workshop, uh, correct? There's no, uh, there's no action needed from us this evening?
Just, just to direct staff to return.
Come back, okay. All right, so the, the recommended actions to direct staff to return by June 17th with the contract extension and budget allocation. Is there a motion? Oh, and if we, if, and if it's, if, if it's to the motion makers liking to add the, the testing, uh, COVID testing option?
As stated, I'll make the motion.
Second, I'll, I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Councilmember Roscoe. Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolls?
Yes. Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin.
Aye. All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Strand, and don't, don't forget to unshare your screen as you go.
Will do. Thank you. If I can, well, figure out how.
There you go. All right, so item 12 then is consideration of a proposed partial rollout of the scholarship program of the West Sacramento Home Run. Is, uh, Berlin or Dr. Jimenez or Jeff, or, there's Jeff, Mr. Miller, welcome.
I'm here, yes. So we are, uh, proposing, uh, a, a sort of a temporary rollout of the scholarship program for the West Sacramento Home Run.
Jeff, Jeff, can I interrupt just a second? Cause I know, I, uh, Mayor Protem Sandin, you know, I've been working a, a, on this, I know with, with both with you and, uh, and, and, uh, Dr. Jimenez, and also with the city manager, wanted to make a, a couple of just sort of, uh, stage-setting comments as well. So if you don't mind, Jeff, I'm going to turn to Mayor Protem Sandin for some remarks first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Council may recall that when we were conceiving of the West Sacramento Home Run, that we considered the possibility of including a scholarship program of some kind in the lineup of home run offerings. And the mayor and I met, um, as he just mentioned, with the home run staff team last month via Zoom to continue work on the scholarship program structure. Scholarship administration is fairly complex, and I've overseen these kinds of programs in my work in higher education and foundations. Given the current shelter in place order and effects on families and students, we discussed what might be possible to launch a scholarship program or part of it sooner rather than later. Given the data sharing arrangements already in place between the city, Washington Unified School District, and Los Rios Community College District, the proposal that's coming before council tonight is, is to partially launch the scholarship program this year, relying on data that we currently have available. The scholarship program will continue to be developed and refined, and a full proposal, I believe, will return, be returned to us in coming months. But I'd like to thank the staff team and our partners at Los Rios for creating a program that can launch even, even though partially now. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you so much, I remember Tim's, and I don't, I have very little to add. That's a very, uh, just a very concise summary of where, of where we've been and why. I mean, the, the, I mean, recalling it, the home, the whole purpose of the home run is to, is to make West Sacramento the, the best place to grow up and the best place to raise a family and the best place to find talent, and, and the scholarship, uh, program has been intended since the passage of Measure E as a, as a central port, uh, component of that to, to recognize and support young people in our, in our city that are going onto higher education and who have earned digital badges, uh, doing, uh, building skills and volunteering in the community, um, and recognizing, uh, other, other, uh, valuable things and that young people do as they proceed towards college. That's the plan, that is, that was the plan, is the plan, continues to be the plan, um, on a going-forward basis. And, uh, but as, as the mayor Protem has said, this proposal tonight was, was put together quickly in order to accelerate, to, to, to offer an early launch. And that's what's partial, but it's, it's early launch, uh, of a, of a, of a partial version of the scholarship program based on all the things that Mayor Protem Sandin about what said about this, this particular elements, set of elements being implementable. Um, and it's a chance for, uh, for us to, to test and to, and to see how we might be able to, um, in, in next, the following year and beyond to, to continue to extend, uh, this important program and benefit to being a West Sacramento who, who, uh, who studies hard, works hard, and graduates from, from high school to, to an even broader range of, of students and, and families into the future. But this is a, this is a really, uh, strong, big, robust, um, sort of unprecedented start, um, to, to a program like, maybe, maybe one of the, the, the best sort of COVID education initiatives in the, in, in the area, and really appreciate Mayor Protem Sandin's leadership in this, in this work, given her extensive background, and then Jeff and, and Justin Jimenez and their colleagues, um, who have, um, worked so hard in order to, to create something, uh, that works, um, right now, uh, and that will make a tremendous difference for, difference for, for both, uh, many young people in our community and for their younger brothers and sisters who are looking up to them, for their families and, 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 and obviously to the future of our, uh, the future of talent of our workforce and therefore of our economic prosperity. So with that, uh, Jeff, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we, well, actually, you know, before I get started, I just wanted to mention that, uh, if you've looked at the report, you, uh, may have noticed that there was a little error in my, my math. So I just wanted to point that out on the second table, on the second page of the report, where I estimated costs for, uh, for the, for the rollout of this program, uh, based on possible percentage increases over a baseline of 83, which was the high point of the past three years. Uh, that was in 2018. It took a 10%, 15% and 20% increase in enrollment in the West Sacramento Promise, uh, which is what would be required to be eligible for the scholarship. And somehow 20%, I came up with the wrong number. That, that number in that third, uh, in that bottom line should be, it's, it comes out to slightly under 100, so the total cost would be 20,000, but it's a difference of about $600. So just wanted to point that out. So the, uh, as you know, the home run, uh, the, the scholarship program is meant to be, uh, ultimately a points-based system based on participation in other enrichment opportunities, particularly, uh, programs operated by the home run. We will be coming as, as, uh, uh, Mayor Protem Sandin and, and the mayor said, we're going to be coming to council with a, a more detailed proposal for how that scholarship could work, uh, in the coming months. For now, this is a pretty straightforward proposal, I think, and it goes along with, uh, a couple of other things that are going to be offered to the class of 2020. The district, the school district and Sacramento City College of Sacramento Center have been working on a, uh, a, a project to roll out automatic admission to the Sacramento City College of Sacramento Center. That will be offered to That will be offered to graduates, the 2020 graduates in West Sacramento. Along with the eligibility, their eligibility for the West Sac Promise if they've completed FAFSA, which I think is probably a requirement in, in Washington Unified. That's the financial aid application. So they would receive the West Sacramento Promise as well, as well as the Los Rios Promise that covers their tuition and fees. And then on top of that, we would be offering them this $200 scholarship. So that's, that's all meant to offer something to the class of 2020 who's had kind of a tough year. And, and so we appreciate the guidance of the, the subcommittee on coming up with this idea. I, I want to be clear. So this, this proposal or the scholarship is available or would be available to graduates. From Washington Unified who enroll at Sacramento City College, West Sacramento Center. Which is in a way, it's kind of exclusive. We don't intend to exclude people from the larger. Scholarship program. It's just as the mayor said, we tried to roll this out quickly. So we're working with the partners. With whom we already have relationships to get this out as quickly as possible. So ultimately the scholarship program will be available to a much wider swath of, of citizens in, members of the community in West Sacramento. So the, the proposal. Is, if, if we are, if the proposal is approved, we would work with. The Los Rios Colleges Foundation. To come up with a total number of students enrolled in the West Sacramento Promise. They will provide that number based on the census that happens in the fall semester. And then we would. We would provide that, the total amount of funding, $200 per student in the form of a gift to the foundation. Students in order to be eligible to receive this scholarship, as I said, have to be graduates, 2020 graduates of Washington Unified School District. Entering Sacramento City College, West Sacramento Center. And they do have to also enroll full time. And that's part of the eligibility for the West Sacramento Promise and the Los Rios Promise. So. I think, you know, that's, that's pretty much all I, all I have for you. The, those estimates there are, you know, demonstrate that this is not a. This is not a huge hit to the budget. We have plenty of room in our budget. So. I just wanted to, I guess, open it up for any, any questions at this point.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. I, I think Mayor Protem Sandin and Jeff both referred to some of the administrative challenges for launching a scholarship. Program and their, their significance. I mean, you think about, and I, I've, I've worked in higher education. Well, I am. I do that right now, actually. College professor. The, you know, think about the, the, all the places, for example, that are, that West Sacramento young people might, might go to college. And I know Councilmember Ledesma's daughters, she considered an, an out of state institution in, in another state. And there are other students in our city that might be going to a historically black college or university or. Or they might going to a trade school in Virginia. And we don't have, we can't simply give them. A check for $200. We need to know, well, did you go to college? Where? How would we know this? Will they, will they give, will they send the city hall a, a letter of admission? But then what if they don't go there? What if they choose to go somewhere else instead? Will you show them their, your class schedule? But what if you then don't enroll? So the, the amount of, the amount of administration required to, to administer a scholarship program for real. For students going anywhere is extreme, extremely complex. And perhaps too complex for a city government. In this particular case, we're, we're fortunate because we have a relationship with Sacramento City College. With data sharing, with lots of other partnerships. So that, as, as Mr. Miller said. This, this, the, only once the student's been counted at the first census at the college as part of their official procedures, therefore they've been enrolled. In classes, they're there and attending will, will that, will that happen? And we can be assured of that because we have a relationship with the college and the high schools in the Washington Unified School District have those same relationships with Los Rios and with us. So we're able to build on the, on the terrific partnerships that have been built over the last several years through, through measure E. And the, and the, and the home run in order for this, this first, this first group of students to be able to take advantage. Would say that, that, in addition to like where the students are going, the other administrative challenge is where are they now? And you might ask, well, you know, what if, what if, what if my, my, my daughter is at, at Delta High School? Or, or at Christian Brothers or, or, or other schools in the community that, that, that many students in our community go to. And, you know, that is one of the goals of the, of the scholarship component of the home run program. But it is similarly complicated because we don't have the same sharing agreements with respect to student records. That we have with Washington Unified in terms of its, its collaborations with the college. We don't have a promise infrastructure already in place in order to transmit the funding. And so those are the kinds of issues that have, have, have meant why the scholarship program is essentially the final portion of the home run. And the final base of the home run to be implemented. But also why we're, we're just really fortunate, both that we have those, those relationships and the data sharing and the contracts and everything else today. And also that, that our staff, our, our, our team and their teams trust one another. And they've been willing to like move forward on, on these, on these, on these, these steps forward that way. Another thing I would, I just highlight, even though it's, it's, it's not a secret, Jeff just reported it. But we, there's been no public launch of it yet. And that is this automatic admission. Benefit that's being offered this year, which will be. I, I think is, is really, really special and extraordinary. Where as far as, as far as anybody knows, will be the first community in America where every high school student gets a letter of admission to college. And in this case, you know, so you, you may have been admitted to the University of Oregon or Chico State. Or to LA Trade Technical College, but you will also get a letter of admission. And for those that didn't get admitted somewhere else, they will get a letter of admission from Sacramento City College. And that's every single graduating high school student. And they will get, those that are eligible will get, also get notification that they, as Jeff said, that they're, that they're, they don't need to worry about tuition and fees. Thanks to the West Sacramento Promise and the Los Rios Promise. And if they go to Sacramento City College, they'll also be receiving a $200 scholarship. There's really no, no, for, there's nowhere else in America doing that. Idaho, the state of Idaho, I think it's the one state in America that's, that's. Does automatic admission for some students into college. So we, we're pretty groundbreaking here. And marrying that together with the tuition guarantee that we've already made as a community, plus this new scholarship. Is a pretty, is a pretty, it's pretty cool and pretty great. And, 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 and in some ways couldn't be better time given. Given all the struggles that, that are graduating seniors, all of our students, but in particular graduating seniors and their families. Are coping with during this season. Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, very supportive of providing what we can is as far as incentives to encourage our youth to advance professionally and whatever. You know, career path they would like to choose. And if this, if this provides that incentive. 100%, 110% behind it. One of the areas that I'd like to see more, you know, outreach is like Collins Teen Center, for example. I've been spending some time there and trying to get Justine. I know that right now it's, it's quite a bit of a challenge and even before. There was some barriers, but just making sure that they're involved in learning more about these programs. So though the, the youth that are participating there, and even if there's somebody that can. Go in and do like a little workshop for the youth or do a Zoom workshop with them so they can learn about this. Sometimes attention spans are short in high school. And maybe the non-traditional educational settings that they may be attending and. They don't, you know, have access to what information is, is being shared there is not accessible to them. But if we, if we can do something, you know, even with our religious institutions here. Reaching out to them as well, as long as they fulfill the, you know, criteria and eligibility. You know, that helps to, to get the word out in other, in other ways. So just that, you know, there was just a, I lament how there was a youth and who unfortunately was killed. And a former student of Yolo High School and had a promising, you know, future. But it just, it takes a lot of work to keep our youth actively engaged in something that is productive. And something that gives them a sense of hope for the future. So with that, I see the home run as that hope that the city is generating. To encourage our youth to be more engaged and involved in something, you know, positive as well as. Other, maybe also through our other programs that either the fire department or the West Sac PD. Just reaching out in all these different ways of getting, you know, getting youth to be familiar and aware of this, these particular programs. And, you know, thank you for the mayor and, and Mayor Protem for, you know, organizing. A, a refined proposal here so that we can keep it active. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. Yeah, coming from somebody who didn't have plans to go to college. I, I, I look at this as. One of these fantastic opportunities and it's, it's symbolic. It's also. Going to make a practical impact on a lot of people when they receive that notification. I want to thank my colleagues for coming up with this. For me, I had a counselor who did an intervention. These kids are going to have a city that does an intervention. And I love the opt out versus the opt in. Because we all know that you have a lot better outcomes when, you know, someone has to, if they're already opted in. And so, you know, that automatic admission is, is huge. I remember hearing about, I think that it was maybe Art Pimentel. Who talked about maybe giving the kinders to college a diploma, saying that in the class of 2033 or whatnot, this is going to be their diploma. And that gave them that, that seed of hope. But yeah, this is, I mean, we got to be real. A lot of these kids. Were making, they're making decisions about their future based on a conversation that they might be having with their high school counselor right now. And we don't have that. Well, maybe not right now, but maybe a couple of months ago. And, and they've been. Denied that due to circumstances outside their control. And so. The, the fact that they could be receiving this gift. And maybe it's the gift of encouraging them to do something they otherwise wouldn't do. Is really huge. And of course, it's, it's the beginning steps, but it's a step to the right direction. Of course, we want to have more kids. We want to have more money and we have, have more reach. But yeah, I think it's pretty extraordinary. And I don't know, I just, I feel really good hearing this item and I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, and I thank you for, for support of this. This is really cool. And you don't think about really. The idea that upon graduating, it, it's just, it's one of those ideas like, why didn't we do this all along? You know, just like it's, they, 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 like you said, I think the analogy is. They move from eighth grade to high school and there's no thought about the choice. You just go and they're enrolled. So I, 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 I like that, the, the idea of this. So. And, and thanking my colleagues as well, Mayor Protem Sandin and Mayor Baldwin. Thank you both for kind of. Keeping the home run spirit alive. And I want to, I want to, and the staff for kind of again reacting quickly and. And jumping in and hopefully giving the class of 2020 something kind of really cool. And I, I do just want to make sure this is all. Because it's something you said, Jeff, earlier, this is all budgeted part of home runs and measure E, correct? And, and I just want to make sure the public is out there that, that has been budgeted and, and we have planned for this program. For some time, thanks to their vote on measure E. So the statement that we have plenty of money applies to what we had here budgeted for measure E. So I just want folks to get that this, this didn't come out of nowhere. This was planned for all along and we were able to get a kind of a early implementation, something really cool. So, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Ledesma and, and Councilmember Roscoe. I, I, Mayor Protem Sandin and I have talked about this 100 times and working on the pieces of it. And, and so much of this is. Well, at two levels. I mean, the, you know. We're a city where we've struggled with confidence in our educational systems and institutions. And sometimes realtors ask questions about, you know, the quality of our schools and. And our parents are like, well, am I, my good parent, if I, you know, if I, if I choose instead to send my kid somewhere else? We're trying to ask and answer that question every day with, with this home run and say, this is. A city that cares about, believes in, supports educational opportunity and achievements. And it's where, it's the best place for your family to succeed. And this is an example of that. But I also, but I, but, but you're so right. It's the, it's about that experience when. I, you know, I just imagine, I've been, Mayor Protem Sandin, so we've said this 100 times, you, you're home, you're home. Right now you're all sheltering, the whole family's sheltering at home. Grandma gets this, this sheet, inappropriate, opens up the envelope and says, and looks at it and says. Mihai, you're going to college and you didn't, you didn't even tell me that you applied. And you're thinking to yourself, I didn't, I don't remember applying, but my grandmother is so proud of me right now. And she keeps reading and it says that you're also getting financial aid and you've got a scholarship that you didn't even know about existing. And in that moment, that moment of pride and questioning and then shared pride is where your whole life can change. And I mean, there's so many variations on how that story might play out. But these small little nudges, this little thing, this little, as you said, this vote of, this letter of confidence from your whole community. In you. And also then you had to explain to yourself and to your family and, or to your kids or whatever. I'm not, I've, no, I decided not to go to college. No, you're, you're gone. And, and, and as, as Councilmember Guerrero hinted at, the. The opportunities at Sacramento City College are so big. And it doesn't mean you're going on to get a bachelor's degree necessarily. You might choose that, but you might enroll in a. In a community health worker program or in a construction trade program as well. There's plenty of, a diversity of opportunities for, for post-secondary learning and for success. That are opening up here. So thanks, I really, thanks so much to the whole council for their enthusiasm, for your support, not just tonight, but on the entire home run. Program and the investments and just building this out and also seeing the vision of the future. It is so true. It is very true, as, as several of you have said, that we need to get the word out. Both to help grandma and granddaughter have that conversation more, make sure that folks take advantage of this. But even for folks that aren't the parents of high school graduates and the graduates themselves this cycle. For, for younger, for younger kids in the community, for, for folks looking at our community as a place to live for, for. You know, that, for the, for the adult children of other West Sacramento residents who went off to make their fortunes somewhere else or join the military. Or when, are deciding, should I come home and make my family in West Sacramento? This, making sure that, that everyone in town knows that these kinds of opportunities are there and that this, that you can't live in a better place. If you, if you, if you, if you're raising a family is really important. And so I completely agree that, you know, some, the, doing the, doing the work to make sure that, that, that. Whether through Collins Teen Center or the realtors or anyone else that, that, that everyone far and wide in our community and beyond knows that this is the place where, where, where every child succeeds. All right. Is there, there's any, there's no further discussion, is there?
I'd like to.
Mayor Protem Sandin moves.
I'll second.
Councilmember Roscoe seconds. Approval of the proposed program features for the first phase of the scholarship program. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Baldwin?
Aye. All right. That motion carries. Thank you. Thanks again, Mayor Protem Sandin. Thanks, Jeff. And all your, Justine and Amanda, your colleagues behind the, behind the camera. Appreciate your work on this and looking forward to the rollout.
Thank you. And, and I also want to. Agree with what a couple of the council members said. I really appreciate the leadership of, of Mayor Baldwin and Mayor Protem Sandin. We came to them with a proposal for the full scholarship program. It wasn't exactly what they were looking for, but. Rather than just sending us back to the drawing board, they said, well, here's what we want from that. But right now, let's do this for the class of 2020. And I just, something that would have occurred to me. And so I really appreciate that leadership. So thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. Have a good evening. All right. Item 13 then is consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance 20-6. Amending the contract between the city council of the city of West Sacramento and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. For section 20, 20,00516, employee cost sharing for members of the West Sacramento Firefighters Association is fantastic.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. So in order to implement the cost sharing agreement negotiated between the city and the West Sacramento Firefighters Association last year. The city's retirement contract with CalPERS must be. the city's retirement contract with CalPERS must be amended. The contract amendment process requires the governing board to adopt a resolution and an ordinance. On April 22nd, 2020, the city council adopted the resolution of intention and waived the first reading of ordinance 20-6. An additional step in the contract amendment process is the employee election as the cost sharing agreement increases their employee contribution rate, which triggers an election. The employee election was held by members and a majority of those infected employees voted to approve the amendment. The planned effective date of the contract amendment will be the pay period inclusive of July 1st, 2020, at which time employees will begin paying an additional 0.5% employee contribution towards the employer rate. Effective pay period inclusive of July 1st, 2021, affected employees will contribute an additional 0.5% for a total of 1% contribution to the employer rate. It is estimated that the cost sharing provision will save the city approximately $31,000 to the general fund in fiscal year 2020, 2021, and approximately $65,000 in fiscal year 2021, 2022 and beyond. These savings were factored into the development of the annual budget process for the additional terms of the MOU between the city and the firefighters association. This process to amend the contract, excuse me, to amend the contract has also been coordinated with the appropriate staff at CalPERS and the West Sacramento Firefighters Association has been apprised of the steps and progress of the contract amendment process so far. Staff respectfully recommends that the city council waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 20-6, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the city and CalPERS to provide employees cost sharing for members of the West Sacramento Firefighters Association. Thank you for your time and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Roscoe.
All right, I didn't put him on mute.
All right, are there any questions for Kevin? All right, we've taken, this is, this is the, one of the last elements of the last contract between the city and the firefighters to be fully implemented because it requires all these additional steps. And so there, there, there may be no questions or discussion simply because we've already considered this. And our, our approval tonight is mostly ministerial, it is entirely ministerial, given that this is, this simply implements the agreement that, that was reached last year. All right, but is there, Councilmember Ledesma?
No, no comment. We're just ready for our motion. I'm not sure if we needed any comment. If there's any comment on this.
No, we have no public comment on it. So Madam Clerk, do, we were weighing in, is there a late comment or?
No, there are no comments.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ledesma.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ledesma and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Sandin. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, Sandin.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Aye.
Cabaldin.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Montez.
Thank you.
That brings us then to item 14, which is an update and actions on the city's COVID-19 response actions. This, the council has been meeting on a weekly basis in order to consider this update item. And the manager's report is a cumulative report. All the full report is in writing, but the cumulative elements will be, will be highlighting this evening in what will be, what is expected to be a brief report and, and discussion since we've been taking these other issues up on a weekly basis. Mr. Laurel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. And like you said, this will be a brief report tonight. I just want to direct your attention to, as we've been doing every week, to attachment one. Just to update on the number of cases in the city in Yolo County. I mentioned last week that we did have some new cases in the past week. So we are up to, as of today, actually 63. There were three new cases last week. The only other item I'd like to note is, we've talked a lot about testing tonight and I'll touch on that in a little bit. Just the rate of testing, you can see on that right side in Yolo County, there's, as of yesterday, there were 4,280 tested minister. Now we're up to 4,459. So it's about, whatever that is, 180 different or so. And that's been about the rate that we've been told. So now, jumping ahead, I, I want to just note the other statistics that you see there. No remarkable change to any of the trends that we've already been seeing. So jumping ahead to an update on testing, I mentioned this, I believe, last week in the report. But since it was talked about tonight, I just want to give a quick update. So we are working on setting up multiple testing sites pending the availability of the state and/or county to administer those sites, staff those sites. We've also given them the indication that we would be willing to commit resources to that effort, including one of the ones that was mentioned tonight, transportation, so to make sure that we have the ability for everyone to get to one of those sites. We are working on multiple sites, like I said, in both different geographies of town, hopefully to cover our different access points there. But the first site will be on June 1st, the first public site. But as the mayor, I think, mentioned earlier, there are private testing sites that have been opening. One that we became aware of today is the pharmacy on Jefferson is offering a limited number of site testing at their location. We hope to see more of that. But that's been the message that we've been conveying to the county. And obviously, the mayor's been reinforcing that, is that testing and tracing is integral to really successfully reopening and sustaining reopening. And, and given our unique nature of our location in the county and also with our proximity to downtown Sacramento, we're, we're doing our best to make sure that we have a robust testing availability in West Sacramento. I wanted to point out also on the roadmap to recovery and the related attestation that the county had submitted to the California Department of Public Health. It was actually approved late this afternoon. I believe we did get confirmation of that. But, you know, that doesn't mean it'll be a race to reopen everything immediately because the Board of Supervisors at their meeting yesterday directed their staff to come back one more time, I believe on next Tuesday, where they're going to look at amending, I believe amending the public health order, or at least providing direction to the staff on proceeding with full implementation of stage two reopening, which essentially means restaurants and storefront retail. Lastly, I just want to point out, there is an update in the report that's highlighted, having to do with the city CDBG CV funds and Project Room Key. Just noting in that section that we have been looking at different options for use of those funds. But most notably, the Project Room Key strategy, as that program winds down, we're being mindful of the need to look to try to sustain some of the housing for the most vulnerable residents. And regardless of where the funding comes from, we're looking at different options right now, working with the county. Looking at state funding and everything else. But those CBG CV funds are definitely one option. But as you'll see, there are, there is a discussion in the update this week about potential uses. And there are, there are more than two. There were only two pointed out. But definitely more than that is on the table and you'll get a, a follow-up in June from staff on that item. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions from the council that I can answer. Thanks.
May just supplement on that testing issue, just to acknowledge the incredible present time that we've been dealing with this, this issue. As councils are aware, the, the city and, and the county have been working on, well, hand in glove on the, on this entire, through this entire crisis and emergency. We've had a very collaborative partnership under very difficult circumstances. In some sense, much more so for the county than, I mean, we've, we've had our, our challenges, but the county's been asked to do things that are so far beyond what it's normally has had to do and at a magnitude just completely out of, out of scale. And, and also had to do so in close, in close coordination with the state government, which has sometimes not been as clear about what it needs to do. So county's done a terrific job and, and we work closely with them. For the last several weeks, we've been pressing on them and other partners to, to, to deploy extensive testing in the city, in the city particularly. And the county's been very focused on adding additional testing and has done a great job countywide. But, and, but the county, the, the system of testing in the county is fragmented. And there are lots and lots of tiny little providers offering 10 tests a day or five tests a day of varying quality. And then there are the major testing facilities available through Woodland General Hospital, Senator Davis, and this, this CalOptim serve facility that the county and the state are supporting at the Woodland Fairgrounds. And those together meet the, the, the state threshold for enough testing at the county level in order to move through stage two. The challenges now has been quite, quite well publicized, but we, we already knew this is the council is that we haven't had any of that level of testing here in West Sacramento, which is where the largest number of cases and hospitalizations have occurred. And all the public health science says you need to, you need to be testing where the, where the potential outbreaks and issues are the, are the most severe, but certainly you wouldn't ignore where half the cases are. And so we've been working to try to solve that problem. The county has as well. And they've been dealing with administrative and reimbursement and other issues that, that they're, that have been arisen with the state government and others around mobile tech, limits on mobile testing, limits on multiple testing sites and other issues. And so last week, we had this, we had a conversation about this here at council as well in general terms. And I, and I, at that time at least, I will say, I believe we had, we had some time to work it through because the state criteria at that time said that you couldn't move through stage two if you had any deaths in the last two weeks. And at that point, the county had a couple. And that, just that, within 24 hours of our council meeting, there were two more. So it seemed as though we had plenty of time to continue to working on, working on developing the, the testing necessary in order to move rapidly to stage two and beyond, right? Once you have, once you have an extensive set of, of testing and contact tracing, you can rapidly move through stages two and three from a public health perspective. However, the county, the county determined that, that several of the deaths in that, in that calculation were, might deserve to be treated differently and in terms of the statistical review by the state. And so the county announced on Thursday that it was going to proceed to submit to the state for approval of, of moving directly to stage two. And they did so on Thursday after our meeting. And so it was at that point, because now, well, I, I, I sent a letter to the county, the chair of the county board of supervisors and to the state, simply pointing out in, in pretty direct terms that this problem of inadequate testing here in the city and what that meant for potential, for detecting and then responding and containing to catastrophic outbreaks in, in West Sacramento. We spent all day Sunday trying to work through solutions. And really, I really would like to acknowledge Mr. Laurel and his team, but especially Supervisor Viegas, who from the early morning hours on Friday, actually, no, I'm sorry, the, the late afternoon hours on Thursday, all the way through Friday and the weekend and beyond, was, you know, calling everyone, trying to put people in a room, trying to break through barriers in order to get to that testing operated here. And went far above and beyond what, what we might have, we, we could have hoped for. We weren't able to get across the line by the end of the day on Friday. And so transmitted that, that formal message to the county and to the state. And I will tell you with great hesitation, because we have such a, we have such a close relationship with the county. And we were, we were working very hard to avert a situation in which our, our, our disagreement about the co-incidence of testing and, and reopening, that that disagreement would be, you know, would make it into the, into, you know, into the public discourse. We were really trying to figure out a way to just solve it because no one was opposed to adding more testing. It just wasn't happening. And, and we, and it's essential in order to protect our citizens that it does. So that all, that all occurred on, on, on Friday. And yesterday, as it turns out, the, the county then needed to submit a revision of its, of its, of its documents to the state. This, again, on Tuesday. The county board of supervisors met on Tuesday and took, and took up that whole, the entire issue about the, the pace of reopening, but including testing. And Supervisor Viegas led the charge on testing here and, and the need for it and the need to not, to not rush into a stage, an unsustainable stage, two and three opening that would be, that would be reversed by an outbreak if we did not have sufficient detection. And, and Supervisor Saylor from Davis made a similar case that the county's testing needs to be strategic, it needs to be designed to monitor. It can't, it can't only be the kind of test you go get at CalExpo on a whim and it tells you information, but it doesn't tell, it doesn't tell our system anything about potential outbreaks and how to contain them. And so the county board did authorize sending back the, the forms to the state, but also as the city manager alluded to, directed, direct their, the staff there to work on, on a more complete, comprehensive and strategic testing plan that, that addressed the issues that we have here and a couple of others in DeKalbti as well. And really, I really want to acknowledge Supervisor Viegas, Supervisor Saylor, other supervisors who supported. Those two really pushed hard on this and Supervisor Viegas, obviously, the most being from, from our, from our city. That was the commitment. And I know the city manager indicated today that the, the ELC leadership from the city and the county, the county had reached out this morning to get to work on that as well. And have assigned a key team member in order to, to accelerate that, that, the availability of systemic testing here in West Sacramento. So there is not, there is not a, there was a, there was a dust up that we were hoping not, wouldn't make it into, you know, media and all of that. It did. In the end, it probably was, you know, helpful in, in advancing the issue. It certainly focused our, the attention here and, and the community and in the county and at the state around some of these key questions. But ultimately, it's, it's absolutely essential because I think this whole council and the whole community wants to reopen as much as possible and as fast as possible. And we know that the only way that that can happen is if we dramatically increase the availability of testing so that we can, we can assure that we're being safe and that we're protecting folks and that we don't end up having to go back into the shelter in place, the shelter in place orders. So as the city manager said, we'll know more about the details of, of how that plan is going to come together and then in the, in the coming couple of, two days. And then how we'll be able to deploy the testing that will line up with that, with that situation. Supervisor Viegas, I will also point it out that at the board meeting, you know, one of the, he, he represents West Sacramento and also Clarkspur. And, and so no, no surprise, he was raised some questions about the, the stage two restrictions from the state on wineries. That under, under advanced stage two, indoor restaurant dining would be allowed. But, but outdoors at, at a winery or at the Sugar Mill, for example, even outside with 10 people would not be allowed. And, and that seemed absurd. And I, you know, I, I certainly agree with him. And it's an example, I think, of, of where we're kind of at a stage now where we're, we're really obsessing about the very small differences in, you know, stage 1.6. And, you know, whether hair salons or nail salons should be open, but not dog groomers and whatever. It's all of, and, and the best way to overcome all of that is to, is to have the system of testing that we're working on. So I'm optimistic, I'm hopeful, I'm encouraged, I'm certainly thankful to the, to the county leadership that has, that has come to the table to try to work this through and to our own team and the members of the council who've been advocating and, and, and working these connections as well on the issue. All right. Councilmember Ledesma?
Yeah, just a quick note of, and I spent considerable time on Sunday, I think it was, with Supervisor Viegas. And, and just want to thank him as well publicly. I know he is, he is really trying to, he's trying to represent West Sacramento well and balancing that with, with what the other districts of Yolo County are looking for. And it's a hard, hard, hard road. So thanks to Oscar for all his work. And, and I, I agree, we don't get to debate or talk about these things much, you know, in terms of the, these things, but they are important conversations we do have, need to have. Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your advocacy and fighting for what I think is right, is to make sure we have testing capability here in West Sacramento. And I think our residents, most, I think they understand, I think everyone's tired of this unilaterally across the, the, the spectrum. And they miss being with neighbors and family and so on. But we, we really do need to take these steps and I support it, the, the direction you and city manager have taken in advocating for the testing. So I just want to make sure you understood that, at least for me. And that we continue down that pipeline. And then talking to some business owners too. They do not, I, I think some of them that I've talked to, they do not want to open, only to be closed again. That would be catastrophic for them. And so I think they will, they, they are, they understand that. But there is, as much as we can hasten that, that move and do it prudently, I think is, is the right tact. So just a word of thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Are there other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Are there other questions or comments on the, on this item? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, thank you. And I, yes, thank you for your, your thoughts about the testing and contract tracing. I think that is very important here. I also think, looking at what, what caused. Or contributed to an eruption here in West Sacramento. It was as a result of, you know, folks who were participating in an activity outside of our city. So in looking at how we ensure that there is some level of, of tracing. That it's a regional approach and I think that's something that was being explored. And for example, I work in, in downtown Sacramento. And from there branches out, you know, my coworkers and my colleagues to other parts of, of the region. And so it is going to be, you know, challenging to have a regional approach. But it very important as we work with our colleagues who are opening up, you know, across the river a little earlier. Was of this Friday. And then we'll have, I think, a major migration of residents who are, you know. Just, you know, see it a little differently than possibly a majority of the residents here in, in West Sacramento. But who will be impacted equally. Because once you go out and return. The, the impact is going to be, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we experienced what we experienced. Was, you know, getting around and going out and all the, you know, the, for, for the rest of us who are sheltering in place, struggling. And our businesses who are financially impaired and will be struggling for years to come. You know, I, I really want to make sure that we convey why it's important to be safe. And to use all the other measures to make sure that, you know, the, the masks are very important. So to, you know, continue to educate not only those that should get the testing and what symptoms, you know, you have or the antibody testing. That's reliable and access to that, you know, when you talk about the testing. Immediately the question comes up, well, what about the antibody testing? Because some people feel they've caught it and they want to know. You know, can they move around and, you know, be, be safe among other people? So that I appreciate. That there are quite a number of people who want to know, well, if I caught it, am I safe? Frankly, it's really hard to tell. I mean, this is a, a, a new virus that we're still learning a lot more about. And it's going to be, I think, a learning curve as we're trying to catch up with what happened early on when it started off last year. And what's happening in other countries and how it's evolving in New York and impacting children. And that's happening in Los Angeles significantly as well, where children are, you know, who have contracted it are showing different symptoms. So as we take a look at, you know, and I don't even know if, if, if the children are being tested and it's really. It's a really painful task, you know, to go through. So I just, you know, want to be really cautious in providing the big picture. On what it is that needs to get done. And I, I really give credit to the county. When they were rolling things out, making sure that, you know, as we, as we move forward and requiring masks. Not, not all the jurisdictions require masks, but I think that is very helpful in preventing the spread. And also, you know, looking at grocery stores who are cleaning the carts. And making sure that things are as germ free as it possibly could be, but you know that you do have to take the precautions. To protect yourself. And I myself have been in, involved in discussions with county supervisors. Has, has, as this has been going along and learning that there are, through the process. That there has been an engagement and I know our city manager was involved, but with other city council members. So that was good. To see that we were in, you know, in discussions with the county supervisors because. When the outbreaks happen, we have to move at enlightening speed to make sure that we can contain it. And to make sure that those, you know, our elderly residential facilities. Are receiving immediate access to the resources as happened in Woodland and an article showed. How nursing, nurses came out and all the other professionals that came out to provide that support for that community. Where they also experienced a sad, significant number of deaths. So just with that, I just want to be able to prepare if we do have an outbreak here. Wherever it may be, that we have the resources in place as we continue to expand. The opening a little, a little more in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I too wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues with respect to, to County Supervisor Oscar Viegas. You know, this, here we have a homegrown West Sacramento guy who's been contributing to his community throughout his life. I mean. Many people don't know that he makes pancakes out of his garage every Saturday to feed the homeless. I mean, this guy is absolutely committed. And his hard work really did pay off. We're very lucky to have his advocacy in our community. So. I, I agree and thank him. I wanted to address part of the report that deals with the CDBG funds. And specifically with Project Room Key. I mean, clearly, we have opportunities that we can consider. Whether that be Rub Key or other. Types of assistance, whether it be, you know, eviction assistance or not. I will say that seeing the progress that many residents have made as we phase out. I, I don't want to lose out on a lot of that. By essentially, people have had the opportunity to, to be placed in a, in a different space. And with respect to immediate needs, now there is an opportunity for forward mobility and a continuum. That if, if, I, I, I'm looking forward to a phase out that respects that and I wouldn't. I'm hoping that it reflects and resembles a bit more of the successes we had with Bridge to Housing. And that was before I was on the council. But I mean, there's so many, so many things that, you know, I've read about how wonderful it turned out. And so with that, I mean, I do agree that, you know, we need to look at whether or not these opportunities. Have other forces, sources of funding that, you know, perhaps we don't need to use our CDBG funds on these particular things. But especially if there's something else that could supplement it. But I just wanted to voice, you know, my position with respect to. Phasing out in a, in a, in a way that assists the residents in, in, in different placements. And only is focusing on the folks who are absolutely vulnerable. The, the sixty-five and over and those that are medically compromised. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I, I certainly agree. I think the, the, you know, we, 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 Project Room Key has been one of the silver linings of the emergency. And showing what can be done when the federal government makes some, some investment. The state government adds, adds to it and coordinates and uses the full powers that it has. And the county, Yolo County and the city work together that we were able to make a significant difference for. And for folks experiencing homelessness who are also at risk and. And we are also, and thanks to the council's action last, last meeting, I think, or maybe the meeting before, you know, on, we're on track in terms of the permanent supportive of housing. But, but what a tragedy it would be for us to, 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 to tell folks that. Because Project Room Key is ending, we're going to have to kick everyone out. And, and but, you know, hopefully you'll still be safe and healthy on the streets when. Our permanent supportive housing project opens later. So and we don't have, we don't have all the resources. We don't own the hotels. We don't control everything. But I do agree with Councilmember Roscoe that we, you know, we ought to be. We, we, you know, our, our values are showing here and this is a chance for us to really make a, make a, make a very significant impact. And also not contribute to make things worse by building up that momentum and the offer from the state and the other funding that may come. If the governor's budget passes to support some of this and the dollars that are already there. It's just an opportunity that we never would have had before the emergency and we may not have again to really do something. Transformative for the lives of a lot of people and for the safety and security of the community as well. So. Obviously, there's so many details and things to think about in terms of that, as well as CDBG allocations, but really appreciate your comments on that, Councilmember Roscoe. All right, any other questions or comments on the item? All right, then thank you, Mr. Manager. That brings us then to the council calendar. Ms. Berlin?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. No real updates tonight other than as we're moving forward, we're trying to get more of the commissions. Up and running through teleconference. One of the first ones will be the Planning Commission, which is tomorrow night. And as items come forward more on their regular agenda, we'll start reopening more of the commissions to review some of those items before coming to council.
Thank you. And I would just add, just note, I think I reported in advance of the meeting that the, the mayor, Pro Tim Sandin and I convened. The chairs and the vice chairs of each one of the commissions with the city clerk's office. To give, to brief them on the, the, on, on sort of what's going on with the city right now in terms of the emergency management, some of their policy issues. Our strategic planning efforts from prior to the emergency. The role that the commissions are playing right now, their future, all of those things and. And I, I think they were appreciative of the, of the update and the dialogue. They provided a lot of, asked a lot of good questions, provided a lot of good ideas, but it was also. Mayor Pro Tim, Tim, Tim Sandin, I'm sure would agree. It was just, it was very. It's very nice to see some of our fellow, you know, volunteer citizen leaders in the community who are, who are out there in the community and so many different. In, in places and lid league and in parks and in a small business and everywhere, just connecting with people. And, and, and keeping our local democracy and our local community alive and thriving. It was just great to, it was great to see their faces. And so it's, and I think they're, they're all, they're raring to get back to work as well. And so the planning commission is going to pioneer that tomorrow night. So again, thanks, thanks to the clerk's office and city manager's office as well. Any other questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
No other reports tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City attorney reports?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Staff direction for members of the council. And we have no future agenda item requests. So is there a motion to adjourn, Councilmember Roscoe?
I'll make the motion.
And, and if, if you wouldn't mind, my request that we adjourn in memory of Steve Roberts. Steve Roberts was, many of us know him more recently from his work at, you know, throughout the county on. The, at the, at the Workhorse Investment Board and Yolo Works and other efforts that he's undertaken. He was also the longtime executive director of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. And involved in so many other activities and initiatives in our community, especially extending all the way. To the, to the, to the period when we became a city in a great West Sacramento. So if you wouldn't mind making that motion with that, with him in mind?
Well said, and yes, I'd ask the council to move forward together in adjournment of Mr. Steve Roberts.
Councilmember Ledesma?
I'll second.
All right, so I moved in second then. All, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role on the motion to adjourn?
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin? Councilmember Guerrero? Councilmember Ledesma? Councilmember Roscoe? And Merrick Baldwin?
Aye. That motion carries five zero and the meeting is adjourned. Good night and stay safe, everyone.
Good night, everyone.